Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting of the Sterling Heights City Council to order. Please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them courage and wisdom to do what is right for all citizens.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Riska. Can we please have the roll call? Here.
Mrs. Rosky.
Here.
Mrs. Kasky.
President.
Mr. Redkey.
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt.
Here.
Mrs. Giannis.
Here.
President.
Thank you, Council. We need approval of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kasky.
Moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion?
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Schmidt.
I would like to pull Consent Agenda Item 8R and make that 9B, please.
Okay, we will take 8R and make it 9B. Is there anything else, Council? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda tonight is a report from our city manager, Mark Vanderpool. Mr. Vanderpool.
Thank you very much, Mayor. First, let me begin by highlighting the Sterling Heights Police Department Law Day Ceremony, which will be on May 19th. The contributions that the police officers make to the community will be celebrated during the Law Enforcement Day. The ceremony will begin at 10:00 a.m. at the north entrance to City Hall, just between the police department. And in case there is rain, we'll do it in the council chambers. For additional information, you can go to our website or simply call 446-CITY. And also, of course, Memorial Day is rapidly coming up. Our 43rd annual Memorial Day festivities begin on Monday, and that is the 30th at 9:00 a.m. with a ceremony in the courtyard between City Hall and, again, the police department. Ceremony will feature remarks from our 2022 Grand Marshal Raymond Nadolski, Mayor Taylor, and Chairperson of the Arts Commission Jeannie Shabath. At 10:00 a.m., the parade kicks off, and you can, again, go to our website for more information on this incredibly popular event in the community. And I also wanted to remind everyone our city offices will also be closed on that Monday. Memorial Day refuse collection will be delayed one day throughout the week, and Friday's collection will be collected on Saturday. And with the summer season rapidly approaching, I wanted to talk just briefly about our firework restrictions in the city. State law prohibits the city from banning the use of consumer-grade fireworks on the following days, so these are the days that they are allowed. Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Memorial Day, so not Memorial Day itself, June 29 through July 4, so that week leading up to July 4, July 5, if that date is on a Friday or Saturday, the Saturday and Sunday immediately preceding Labor Day, so not Labor Day, and between, well, you're not concerned about December, January yet, so let's just focus on the summer months. So it's important that you comply with our regulations. Aside from those days, fireworks can only be, on those days, discharged from 11:00 a.m. to 11:45 p.m. So our ordinance does require fines and citations for any times outside of that very specific allowance. So we do have to issue citations annually. We do have to recite for improper hour usage, for litter, for letting out fireworks on public property. You can only use consumer-grade fireworks on private property. You can't do it on sidewalks and roads and so on. So if you partake in these activities, please go to our website to make sure that you do it safely and within the restrictions that are required by city ordinance. And as I mentioned at the last city council meeting, every month, we're focusing on highlighting various boards and commissions and the good work they're doing throughout the community, and especially the volunteers that serve on those boards and commissions. Our volunteers are incredibly important to the community. They do great work, and we want to make sure everyone knows what's going on with our boards and commissions. So this evening, we're highlighting our historical commission, and I'm pleased to introduce our library director, Tammy Turgeon, who's going to introduce the chair, and then we'll have a presentation about their good work.
Ms. Turgeon.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor, city council members, Mr. Vanderpool, Mr. Kuschubski, and residents. I'm here tonight as the staff liaison to the historical commission, and I have with me Brian Wojahowski, who is the chair of the historical commission, and he's going to give you a report on what the commission's been doing and what they're going to be doing in the future. Brian, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mark, and Tammy, and city council members. I appreciate the time to speak in front of you all here today. As Tammy mentioned, I'm Brian Wojahowski, Chair of the Historical Commission. And joining me on the commission, as you can see on the slide here, is a team of hard-working volunteers who work together to preserve and promote the rich history and heritage of Sterling Heights. We are part of several historical associations, including the Macomb County Heritage Alliance and the Historical Society of Michigan, and our primary goal is to help inform our fellow residents about the history that has happened and continues to happen around us right where we call home. We accomplish these efforts through several types of activities: maintaining the Upton House Museum's displays, providing tours of the Upton House Museum, conducting our historical programs, and maintaining our archives and preserving local history. Most residents know about the Historical Commission through the Upton House Museum, which is located right here at the corner of Utica and Dodge Park, which was remodeled in 2019 after incurring some water damage and then had its grand reopening shortly thereafter. However, even shortly after that, as a result of the pandemic, things closed us down until January 2021. The Historical Commission is responsible for the display, cataloging, and organization of all the items throughout the home and the museum. And as you can see here on this slide, this is some of the items that you'll find in the Upton House Museum. On the first floor, we've got it modeled after a historic Victorian-era home, utilizing period-appropriate furnishings and stylings to invoke the life and time of William and Sarah Upton and their family. On the second floor has museum-style displays grouped around theme rooms that helps tell Sterling Heights' history throughout the years. You can see some of these on the slide here as well. We've also recently started doing some other elements to help introduce displays of historical culture throughout the city. We also have a traveling history kit, which we produced over the last year. This is a kit that can be utilized by third- and fourth-grade students during their Michigan history curriculum portion of their classes. This allows them to learn a little bit more about some of the historical events, such as the Holcomb Beach excavation or the Plan Clinton-Kale Mizzou Canal Project from the early 1800s. This gives them the opportunity to learn about the history that happens right here around them at that early age. We also maintain a display at the community center, which is regularly updated with some historical items from our collection and our members' collections as well. But like I said, most people know us for the Upton House tours. During the 2021 calendar year, we had 650 people visit the museum. During 2021, we required preregistration for all of our tours during that time, aside from the open house events we had during Sterling Fest and Sterling Christmas. So that 650 number is still pretty impressive considering it required preregistration for all of those. But tours are available to schedule now. As of right now, the dates you see on the slide in front of you, 1 through 4 every Wednesday. The second Sunday of every month, we are pleased to announce we are back to our open house format for our Sunday tours, as well as open houses available during some of the major city events, such as Sterling Fest and Sterling Christmas, with group tours available by appointment. Also, in the past year, we've incorporated some new elements into our tours, including an audio tour, which is available on a sign outside of the house. There's a QR code that residents can scan, learn a little bit more about the Upton House out there. And just a couple months ago, we introduced a video tour of the upstairs of the house as well. So residents who are unable to make it to the second floor of the house still get the opportunity to learn some of the history of Sterling Heights with that tour that our team was able to put together. The commission also leads workshops and programs that help educate and involve the citizens of Sterling Heights in its history. As a result of the pandemic limiting our in-person availability, the commission's efforts shifted to online programs and videos, a series of videos that we produced. These videos were produced in association with Sterling Heights TV, so thanks to them for that. And thanks to our commission member Cynthia Appleton for all of her script-writing and research efforts to produce those videos. You can see on this slide here, we've got the thumbnails for these three videos. Collectively across these videos, they've generated over 9,000 views on YouTube and Facebook, which is notable because it's more than some of the views on some of the city council member meetings as well.
Burn.
Tam, yeah. You guys can blame Tammy for that one. We also are pleased-
That means nobody's watching you right now, Brian.
That's true. That's a good point. Now this is going to get clipped on YouTube and get shared. But we are pleased to announce that we are returning to some in-person programs. Actually, our first in-person program that we're getting back to is tomorrow. At the library, there's going to be an appraisal program where people can bring their personal treasures and get them appraised for their value. Unfortunately, that is currently already at capacity. But we have another event coming up later in the summer, a gravestone cleaning program, cleaning and maintenance program, that we're doing in partnership with the University of Michigan Flint. The last item that I want to touch on here is our role in maintaining our archives and preserving history here in Sterling Heights. This is a very important thing because, like I mentioned before, history is happening around us every day here still. One of the things that we do is we maintain the register of historic homes in Sterling Heights, so homes that meet our criteria, as in that they were produced before 1950, are eligible for being put on our list of historic homes and businesses. And alongside that, one of our other archives is maintaining the Upton House Museum Collection. As of 2021, we've cataloged everything that we have in the Upton House Museum's collection, including everything on display, everything that's in storage. And as a result of kind of getting a better idea on what we have in our collection, we have started to slow down our efforts in assessing new items. Now we're only determining things that are of value to the city or the museum or the collection are notable, worth bringing in. You will notice on this slide, I've noted some things that we have brought in recently, including an antique wood-burning stove, a parlor stove, some period-appropriate furniture, such as a rocking chair, and some new clothing items, or not new clothing items, some old clothing items, including pieces from Sarah and Frank Upton. These pieces from the Uptons are notable because the only other thing we have from the Uptons in our collection is the lamp that's shown on that slide there as well. So this gives us a nice opportunity to tie our collection back to the family as well. We also look at some more modern elements of history as well. One of our efforts, as a result of the pandemic, we had our History Today program, where we collected written works and art from students in the area and used those to find out how they were dealing with the COVID-19 pandemic. You'll see a couple of examples of some artwork right there. This was on display in our display case at the community center through this past September. We are also currently working with the Department of Natural Resources and the Michigan History Center to replace and update the weathered Holcomb Beach marker that is currently displayed in front of Heritage Junior High, so that we can get that updated. That's seen a little bit of damage. It's seen some better days, so we're currently working on getting that replaced. I do appreciate, oops, there we go, I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all here tonight, give you an idea of what's going on with the Historical Commission, and welcome you all to take a tour of the Upton House and see what we have to offer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Good job.
And Mayor, that is the last item on my report. Again, we'll be highlighting boards and commissions through the rest of the year, and I think you would all agree the work they're doing is most impressive. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vanderpool. The next item on our agenda tonight is a presentation, and this is to acknowledge and accept a donation of a remote methane leak detector from Heath Consultants, Incorporated. We do have a presentation from our fire chief, Chief Kevin Edmund. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Mr. Vanderpool, Mr. Kuschubski. What I'd like to do is present to you tonight the donation of the meter, and I'd like to introduce Brian Richter, our acting fire marshal right now, who was instrumental in bringing this technology to the department and helping me coordinate this donation. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Brian Richter.
Thank you, Chief. Once again, thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, city officials. Thank you for this time. So tonight, Heath Consultants, out of Houston, Texas, a leader in safety and natural gas infrastructure utilities, a certified women's business enterprise by the Women's Business Enterprise National Council, the nation's largest third-party certifier of business owned and operated by women in the United States, has graciously donated a remote methane leak detector first responder to the Sterling Heights Fire Department. This detector will allow our firefighters to access emergent and non-emergent situations from a safer distance than our current practice. Being able to identify a hazard from about up to 100 feet away, instead of having our crews enter a gaseous plume, is kind of a win-win for us. From the time Mr. Jacobs reached out to me and from the time we've worked through the particulars, I've stretched the time to look over about a year's worth of past runs for service, and I've determined about approximately 100 times we would have used this detector in the past year, about 160 times. So dispatches for hazardous conditions, combustible and flammable gas leaks, smoke and other toxic environmental runs, also to ensure that the home is safe, our residential and commercial homes are safe to enter after a fire, to pursue further investigations. The first responder detector costs over $15,000. Not only has Heath Consultants covered the cost of this detector, Adam here as well is going to come in and train all of our firefighters on all three shifts, so that they are properly trained in the usage of the detector. So I'd like to introduce Patrick here. So Patrick and I go back way, I've known Patrick for 20 years. He's a really good friend of mine. Patrick started off as Heath as just a regional sales rep out of Michigan here. Now he's a national sales director for the company. So I would like to personally thank Patrick and Heath Consultants for this donation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Yeah, it's my pleasure to represent Heath Consultants. Like Brian said, we're a family-owned business, 90 years in business, based out of Houston, Texas. This is an American-made product in Houston, and Adam Hooper, our regional sales director, manager, will be training the firemen here and supporting the product. And I'll let Adam speak a little more about the technology and how it's used in today's market.
Thank you, Patrick. Brian, Chief Edmund. Council, Mayor, appreciate the opportunity. As Patrick said, I'm Adam Hooper. I'm the regional salesperson for our company, based out of Houston, Texas, for kind of the Midwest region. So we kind of cut our teeth in the natural gas market over the last 80-plus years. The instrument that we're donating is a recent iteration of one that we have in the field in the thousands in gas companies all over the U.S. and abroad. So this is the instrument. As we discussed, it's the Remote Methane Leak Detector. So what this does, there's two lasers in here. One's a spotter laser, so you know where your actual working laser is being pointed, which is eye-safe, and there's a working laser. The laser that is doing the work and determining if there's methane present or not is calibrated to a specific wavelength. That wavelength absorbs methane. So depending on the amount of methane absorbed, the laser is returned back into the receiver, and it will give you a digital readout as far as safe or unsafe environment. So basically, what this tool can allow us to do is scan an environment and give us a no-go or a go as far as if it's safe to enter a building or not. So nuts and bolts of this instrument, it's, like I said, it's kind of the second iteration. It's been in the field for about 15-ish years in one form or another. Constantly been upgrading and updating the laser and things inside. And I wasn't told it was all three shifts, but I will be up here training the fire department how to use this instrument properly and effectively, so that we can save lives.
Awesome. Thank you. Chief, anything else?
I'm proud of the work that Brian's done, and I think this technology will go a long way for us. I was telling Patrick, there was a time where I got off the fire truck, and my meter went off immediately when I got off. If I would have had this equipment when I was a lieutenant, it would have been a lot easier to point it out the window and find out that we should stop way short. So I think it's going to be very valuable in the organization. And thank you for allowing us to accept this donation.
Absolutely. Council, we do have a suggested action.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Zarco.
Resolve to acknowledge and accept a generous donation by Heath Consultants, Incorporated, of the Remote Methane Leak Detector First Responder Model to the Sterling Heights Fire Department at a value of $16,200.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Just one more thing, the FBOI's account on the truck, so.
Well, first of all, thank you for the donation, but I have to tell you, as I was sitting here and I was listening to this, I thought Mrs. Schmidt could probably use this in her backyard because she lived so close to what was a landfill at one time, and they have the methane vents there. So that's why-
Those are at zero now.
They're at zero, yeah. So, but yes, so thank you so much, and we know all about methane gas in this city, let me tell you. So I appreciate it, and thank you for coming all the way up here to present it. Thank you.
Council, anyone else? If not, I just want to say thank you very much for the generous donation. You guys obviously work with fire departments across the country, and you know, we take our firefighter safety very seriously. We want to do everything we can to protect them and keep them safe. They are very well-liked around here in Sterling Heights. They do an incredible job, and so this is going to help keep them safe. And so we really, honestly, truly thank you for your kind, generous donation of not just this tool, but also your time and training. And so thank you very much. Council, with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. One more big round of applause. Thank you for your support. With that, we will move on to the next item on our agenda tonight, which is to consider adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 13 of the City Code to reduce the number of members appointed to the Youth Advisory Board and change the timing for annual reporting to the city council. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, council, we need a motion.
Mayor Taylor.
Mrs. Sarosky.
Resolve to adopt the ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 13 of the City Code to reduce the number of members appointed to the Youth Advisory Board and change the timing for annual reporting to the city council.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, Mrs. Sarosky?
You know, not really. I know that we had a lot of discussion on this. The advisor was in the room. She's no longer in the room, but she was quite clear that this was going to work well in their plan and how many members- this was going to work well in their plan and how many members normally do come. So I think this will work nicely, and I have no other questions. Thank you.
Okay, counsel, anyone else? If not, I'm going to just take this opportunity to say thank you to Marissa Russo for all the work she does for the Youth Advisory Board. I know, thank you to Henry, who I think was instrumental in planning a field trip for the Youth Advisory Board tomorrow to Lansing for a Capitol tour, which I know I and other members of council will be attending. And we really are encouraged by the work that the Youth Advisory Board does. Before tonight's meeting at 6:00, from 6 until about 7, we had 23 scholarships that we awarded, or I should say that the Sterling Heights Community Foundation and partners with the Community Foundation awarded. So it's really encouraging, especially this time of year when school's getting out, kids are graduating, moving on to see the kind of involvement we have with the next generation of leadership. So thank you to Marissa, Youth Advisory Board members, and hoping that this is a great way to take a big step forward for this group. So with no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next on our agenda tonight is the Consent Agenda with the omission of Item R. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on any item on tonight's Consent Agenda? I'll take you in the back first, and then I'll get you next. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of City Council, Mr. Vanderpool, Mr. Kachubski. My name is Cindy Bjornson, and I'm a member of Community Alliance. I would like to thank Mayor Taylor and the City Council for adopting the resolution designating the month of June as Pride Month in the city of Sterling Heights. Pride Month is celebrated every June as a tribute to those who were involved in the uprising in New York when police raided the Stonewall Inn, a gay club in Greenwich Village in 1969. Pride Month is a time to recall the trials of the LGBTQ+ community, what the trials they have endured, and to celebrate the triumphs of trailblazing individuals who bravely fought and continue to fight for full equality. So thank you for bringing the recognition the local LGBTQ+ community deserves by designating June as Pride Month in Sterling Heights. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Suntan?
Thank you, Mayor, council, Mr. Kachubski, and Mr. Vanderpool. I'm here to thank you for, again, issuing the proclamation for making June 3rd Wear Orange Day. I just wanted to give a little background for those of you here who haven't ever heard of Wear Orange Day. Heidiya Pendleton was a 15-year-old honor student who was shot to death on January 29, 2013, while standing with friends in a small park. The gunman opened fire on the group of students, mistaking them for members of a rival gang. Following her death, Heidiya's friends and family encouraged people across the country to take a stand against gun violence by wearing orange on her birthday, June 2nd. Since 2013, Wear Orange has grown into a movement of those advocating for common sense gun legislation and an end to gun violence. It's now marked by activities and commemorations for the entire first weekend of June. On November 30, 2021, a 17-year-old student with known mental issues entered Oxford High School with a 9-millimeter Sig Howard SP 2022 pistol in his backpack. This weapon was an early Christmas gift from his parents, and by the end of that morning, the shooter had killed four and injured seven of his fellow students. According to Everytown Research, the United States averaged just over 87 school shootings each year from 2013 to 2021, resulting in an annual average of 28 dead and 59 wounded from school shootings. In less than 24 hours this past weekend, two race-based mass shootings were carried out in our country, one in a Buffalo, New York supermarket, and the other in a Southern California church. The New York shooter targeting blacks, and the California shooter targeting Taiwanese. These join the ranks of the hate-centered mass shootings at the Pulse nightclub in Orlando, the Walmart in El Paso, the Sikh temple outside of Milwaukee, the Tree of Life synagogue in Pittsburgh, the Emmanuel African Methodist Episcopal Church in Charleston, just to name a few. There are all these events that make the news that we see every day, and we're sadly becoming desensitized to them. However, the hundreds of women injured or killed by guns at the hands of their domestic abusers each year, and the thousands of suicides by gun remain unseen and mostly unspoken. I just want to leave you with one more frightening statistic. Data from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention show that as of 2020, guns have overtaken car crashes as the number-one cause of death for children from 1 to 19 years old. Many of those caused by guns that are not stored properly. If we can't protect our own children and grandchildren from this epidemic, we are doing something very wrong. Please remember and wear orange for victims and survivors of gun violence on June 3rd, and aim to make a difference in helping to end gun violence every day. And again, thank you all. You've always been generous in the past with your proclamation, and all of you that are wearing orange, it's very important, and you can see every day, it seems like it's racing faster and faster. So again, thank you for the recognition, and, you know, keep helping us with the work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here every year and the work you're doing in this very important topic. So thank you. Ms. Elias?
Good evening, council and city officials. My name is Senna. I was reading about some of the resolutions you're planning to introduce, and one that I was interested in hearing more about is the resolution to introduce the month of June as Pride Month. I'd like to know what that will include, because last year I was busy working and did not realize that you had flown the flag of the LGBT over the city, which I think is inappropriate, because I don't see you flying the Christian flag over it, or Italian or such. I was just wondering, in a matter of keeping the city united rather than dividing it and paying special attention to one group rather than another, that you wouldn't do that again? Second, I wanted to know if you were around for the National Day of Prayer, which has been established for the praying of every government official and our city and our state, and I'm wondering if you made a resolution for that? Because I don't know what you're picking and choosing to wish to support, but I think the National Day of Prayer has been highly recognized, very beneficial. But the point is, I don't want any flag flown on our city other than the ones designated by the state and the US. And I just think you should be considerate of others. As much as everyone has the right to live their life, you should not be picking and choosing who to promote. Thank you very much.
Anyone else under the Consent Agenda? If not, close that. Counsel, we need a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Gaski?
Move to approve the Consent Agenda as amended.
Support.
It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is to consider nominations to the city of Sterling Heights Boards and Commissions. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, okay. Bear with me for a moment, because I had a little snap food. Okay, there are a number of boards and commissions that are up for nomination tonight. The first is the Planning Commission. There are three appointments to be made. This is a mayoral appointment to terms ending June 30, 2025. Due to not being able to access or not being able to find where this information was, I would like a postponement of this item to the, I believe it's Tuesday, June 7, council meeting. Yeah, Tuesday, June 7, which will give enough time to get these members appointed by the end of June when their term expires. So, counsel, I would entertain a motion to postpone the Planning Commission appoint nominations to the June 7, 2022 City Council Meeting.
So moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Next up is the Board of Ordinance Appeals 1. There are four appointments. These are council appointments to terms ending June 30, 2025. Is there anyone who'd like to make a nomination here?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Schmidt?
If, without objection, I'd like to appoint all four. Resolve to nominate James Mandel, Kathleen Martin, Justin Smith, and Michael Stickney to the Board of Ordinance Appeals 1 for consideration as an appointee, I'm sorry, for consideration as an appointee to the Board of Appeals 1 at the June 7, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the Board of Ordinance Appeals 2. This is a city council appointment. There are two members seeking reappointment to terms ending June 30, 2025. Counsel, is there a nomination?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco?
I'm going to do both of them since the terms are ending at the same time, so it would be, where are we at? Resolve to nominate Ben Ancona and Lauren Tackett for consideration as an appointee to the Board of Ordinance Appeals 2 at the June 7, 2022 General City Council Meeting.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion, counsel? With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the Board of Review, again, two members, council appointment to terms ending June 30, 2025. Is there a nomination?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco?
For the Board of Review, right?
For the Board of Review.
I'll do them both at the same time. Resolve to nominate Kimberly Legarski and Mark Magny for consideration as appointee to the Board of Review at the June 7, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the Pension Board, General Employees, 1 Appointment, Richard Wyler, seeking reappointment. This is a council appointment to a term ending June 30, 2025. Counsel?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Sarowski?
Okay. Resolve to nominate Richard Wyler for consideration as an appointee to General Employee Pension Board at the June 7, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
No.
With no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the Police and Fire Pension Board, two appointments, members seeking reappointment. This is a council appointment to term ending June 30, 2026 for both of them.
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Zarco?
Resolve to nominate John Lamorato and Robert Melzack for consideration as appointees to the Police and Fire Pension Board at the June 7, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
No.
No discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is the Zoning Board of Appeals, three members seeking reappointment. This is a council appointment to terms ending June 30, 2025. Counsel, is there a nomination?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Radke?
Without objection, I'm going to do all three at the same time. Resolve to appoint.
I object.
Okay.
Why don't you take them one at a time?
Oh, I will then, no problem. Resolve to appoint John Fen for consideration as an appointee to the Zoning Board of Appeals at the June 7, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. John has done an excellent job on the Zoning Board of Appeals. I think he really highly values his role there, and he seems very engaged. I'm proud to support him again.
I agree. Counsel, anyone else? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Radke?
Mr. Mayor? Resolve to appoint David Graff for consideration as appointee to the Zoning Board of Appeals at the June 7, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mr. Radke?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Graff has been an excellent member of the Zoning Board of Appeals. He's thoughtful. I think he does a great job, and I'm happy to renominate him.
Okay, counsel, anyone else? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Radke?
Thank you. Resolve to nominate Stephanie Jackson for consideration as an appointee to the Zoning Board of Appeals at the June 7, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Mr. Radke?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mrs. Jackson is currently an alternate to the board. She served on the East Point Zoning Board of Appeals previously, serving as alternate in our board. Her father is the previous mayor of East Point, and I think that she'd be a welcome addition moving up from the alternate slot to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Mr. Radke. Counsel, anyone else? Any further discussion? Okay, I'm going to vote no, and it's not because I don't think Ms. Jackson would do a good job. I think she would. I think she's clearly got the support of the council, and I could have just said nothing. But I do want to say that I believe Eric Castiglia is doing a good job on our Zoning Board of Appeals. I would vote to reappoint Mr. Castiglia. I know that he's made a name for himself in local GOP politics here, and that can sometimes, you know, whenever you get involved in partisan politics, it's not always pleasant, and I get that. And I understand that some members of the council have some concerns with his involvement. I do just want to say on the record, I think he's doing a good job, and I would like to see him retain his seat, so that's why I'll be voting no on Ms. Jackson. Mr. Radke?
Just very briefly, Mr. Mayor, just to respond, I am not supporting Eric Castiglia for renomination, not because of any of his partisan politics, but because of several personal statements he's made in public. One, he called, he said to Ashley Freeman, a member of our Sustainability Commission, that she lived in Pontiac. She's African-American. I grew up in this area. Anyone who makes a comment like that, I think it's pretty clear what he meant. He's made several other comments about Asian-Americans I did not care for. Therefore, I will not support him because I do not think he can be unbiased in his role on this board. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Gaski?
I would like to talk to Eric Castiglia before I vote for someone else, because I think he's done a fairly good job, and I would like to confirm whether he should continue or not.
Okay.
So I will be voting no. I think against Ms. Jackson, but I would like to talk to Eric first.
Anyone else, counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
I too am going to be continuing to vote for Eric Castiglia. I think he's done a good job. I actually do know that he was misinformed. He was told that she did live in Pontiac by some people that I know personally, and had to re-educate those people as well. So although I think Ms. Jackson is a lovely person and has done a good job, I'm going to continue to vote for Eric and vote for him myself.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Sarowski. Anyone else, counsel?
Mayor Taylor?
Mrs. Schmidt?
Throw the chair to Mr. Kachubski. This is just a nomination, so we can always change at the next meeting, correct?
Mr. Kachubski?
That's correct.
Okay. Anyone else? If not, Ms. Riska, can we please have a roll call vote?
Yes, Mrs. Sarowski?
No.
Mayor Taylor?
No.
Mr. Yanez?
Yes.
Mrs. Yarco?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaski?
No.
Mr. Radke?
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay, motion to nominate Stephanie Jackson to the Zoning Board of Appeals for confirmation at the next council meeting is approved by a 4-3 vote. That is all of the boards and commissions for tonight, and we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the portion where we hear communications from citizens. Is, no, oh, you know what? We have Item R from the Consent Agenda. My apologies, Mrs. Schmidt. So Item R from the Consent Agenda is to adopt a resolution to recognize and congratulate the Sterling Heights High School marching band program on the milestone of its 50th anniversary. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? If not, Mrs. Schmidt.
Thank you, Mayor Taylor. I pulled this item because as it's been no secret, I, it seemed like yesterday that I was on the committee working on the 40th anniversary for this band program, and it's not only the marching program, it is the entire band program. This band program I was part of for a solid eight years and am proud to say that I was on that executive board for seven of those years. It's a very hardworking group of students and parents and staff, and they really do deserve the recognition for all the hard work that they put in, and I wanna congratulate them in their success and wish them well in the next 50 years. So that's why I pulled this, and I would love to make the motion, resolve to adopt the resolution recognizing and congratulating the Sterling Heights High School Band Program on the milestone of its 50th anniversary.
Support.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion, Mrs. Schmidt?
I think I said what I need to say, sorry. I missed a meeting, I lost my mind.
It worked out very well.
Got it already.
Did you not? Counsel, anyone else? With no further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and a big congratulations to Sterling Heights High School Band Program. Now we will move on to communications from citizens, is there anyone in the audience who'd like to speak on any item regarding city business that was not on tonight's agenda? Ms. Elias.
Good evening again, it's beautiful to see the light out, not dark. This is on something I introduced real quickly to you, I wanna really make sure that I articulated a little better. I see Warren Council and other councils in the state that when a resident brings forth a question or a suggestion for an answer, that they get that answer delivered sometime in the next meeting, cuz that's just courteous to the, the resident who lives here, who has a sincere question or a suggestion that would like those questions to be answered. I asked a while back if the city council would provide us with answers to legitimate questions that the residents have at the next council meeting, if we presented at this council meeting that we would get a response. I've not seen that, every time I ask a question, I don't get an answer. I did pose a question recently today about do we have a resolution for National Prayer Day, and I haven't heard of that, but my thing is, it would be a great way to get, to communicate with the residents, to give them feedback to the questions that are sincere, that they wish to be answered. If you could provide that, that would be awesome, cuz then you are a representative of the city and answering the questions, legitimate questions of residents who really never get an answer, and who wants to FOIA things? You represent us, this is, we're coming to the meetings, we're asking a question, I'm just suggesting that you would consider answering legitimate questions from the representative of your city at the next following meeting, so they understand what the answer is, cuz we never get an answer. So I, I just want that, because honestly, I think it's very legitimate, I think it's very, it shows that you care about our feedback, and you give us feedback on our question. I know other cities do it, so I would hope that you would, might consider that, that's something that you can do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Elias, anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hello, Sanford Williams, thank you, Mayor Taylor and council. I was just coming up to ask if there's any update on your task team that you guys was working on with the dispensaries, or if there any update on the zoning or municipalities, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else under communications from citizens? If not, I'll close that portion, go on to reports from city administration, Mr. Vanderpool.
Mayor, just quickly, I can respond to a couple of questions that came up tonight. First, there was a question about under what conditions does the city decide to fly certain flags? We do have three flag poles, they are on city property, it's within the city council's authority to designate certain activities or initiatives or causes to support and appropriately fly related flags if the city council so chooses. An example most recently would be the Ukrainian flag that the city council directed administration to be displayed, and also through resolution, the Pride Month flag, and so the key is that the city council has to take appropriate action, either by directing administration or by, and/or adopting a related resolution, which you have consistently done. With respect to some of the other questions Ms. Elias raised, I don't recall those, but you certainly know how to reach myself or the city clerk, and if you have any follow-up questions that we weren't able to answer at a council meeting, because we can't answer all of them, and normally they require some research, we're happy to do that, and we pride ourselves on getting back to residents. I believe it's Mr. Williams asked about the Marijuana Facility Task Force, that group has met once now. I shared with the city council and audience members the structure of that task force and the scope of service that they're working on over the ensuing months, that report is expected to be completed later this year. We will share a draft report and then the final report with the city council, and that'll be up to the city council. What they choose to do with the report, so mayor, I think those were the only questions that came up this evening, thank you.
Okay.
I won't respond to that. I don't know why she's talking to, Siri is listening.
Oh, Mrs. Zaroski. That was very well timed.
I don't know why she wants to respond.
Always. Mr. Kachubski, anything tonight?
No, Mayor, nothing tonight.
Thank you. Counsel, I'll open it up to reports, new business, unfinished business, Mr. Radke?
Yes, thank you, briefly, Mr. Mayor, I look forward to going on this field trip tomorrow to the state capitol, I thank Councilman Yanis for setting it up, I think it's gonna be great for the Youth Advisory Board, and for those of us who still consider ourselves part of the Youth Advisory Board, even though we're a little, little older now.
And delusional.
Is that your iPad again?
Yes.
You know, it's gonna be great, we're gonna have a tour, I always, I've honestly never been on a tour of the state capitol, so I think it'll be educational for me, so I look forward to doing it. Just two more things, without objection, there are two resolutions I was hoping that could be added to our packet next month. The first is a resolution recognizing Asian-American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, which is June traditionally, and the second one would be the resolution honoring the 40th anniversary of Vincent Chin's murder. And for those of people at home and in the audience who don't know, Vincent Chin was murdered by some out-of-work auto workers for essentially, they thought he was Japanese, he was Chinese, but they, they killed him here in Michigan. It was a sign of anti-African hate due to layoffs in the auto industry. This is the 40th anniversary, it's kind of a rallying cry for the Asian-American community. Members of our own community, Rebecca Islam, who lives in Sterling Heights and is the Chair of the AIPA Task Force for the State, reached out to me with a draft resolution, asking us to honor it, so I'd ask us to add that to our packet. Additionally, hopefully we could work with our Community Alliance and some of our other boards and commissions to think about some educational elements to both Asian Heritage Month and also to commemorate this sad, sad tragedy, so it never happens again. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Without objection, I guess.
Any, any objection?
No.
Hearing none, we have direction, thank you. Mrs. Schmidt?
Mayor Taylor, thank you, I just wanted to briefly make mention and give thanks and kudos to Community Relations, the Sterling Heights Police and Fire Department, and Warren Consolidated Schools. They presented a program at Sterling Heights High School last week called Every 15 Minutes, and it was presented to the students and it addressed drunk driving. And we all know this is prom season and this discussion becomes a prominent topic this time of year, however, unfortunately, it happens all year round. I will tell you that I watched the video that the city presented, and it was very emotional, it was very impactful. I will also tell you that when the students came over to my building from Sterling that day, they were shook up, and to have a Grim Reaper go and present roses to students as a symbol of what could happen to them for drunk driving is extremely impactful to these young kids. It meant something, and I give kudos to the district because they're not burying their heads in the sand. It happens everywhere. So, along with the Police and Fire Department, they presented this and then they showed, they presented the film on a different day, and I want, I wanna thank all of those involved because it was a very, very good program, and I hope that other school districts take note and participate in this as well. So, I have nothing further.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt. Counsel, anyone else? Mrs. Zarco.
Just, thank you, Mayor Taylor, but just to elaborate a little bit on what Mrs. Schmidt, Mrs. Schmitz, Schmidt said, I've only known you for 20 years. It was, I had compliments about the program from the staff at Sterling Heights High School and what it meant, you know, for them to be there while this was going on, and their observations, and one of them was a counselor. So, this, they hope that it'll happen again, that they'll bring it back again next year and, and it, and the kids will pay attention to what they learned that day. And then another resolution is, if we don't have it already planned, is Juneteenth, which we would probably have to recognize on the next, at the next meeting.
Do we have that scheduled, Mr. Vanderpool? We have it scheduled.
Okay. Nothing further.
Thank you, Mrs. Zarco, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Yanis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, so I have a small list of things here, first of all, I should apologize for, for making light during that presentation of the, the gift to the fire department, I, I guess I can't help myself, especially Mr. Richter and I, or Acting Fire Marshal Richter and I were, worked on the same crew for a number of years and we're very close friends and, you know, we kid each other, but that, that piece of technology just goes to show how far the fire service has come. When I first started on the fire service, you were considered less than a man if you wore your air pack into a fire, and now you wouldn't think twice about wearing your air pack into a fire or any kind of dangerous situation, and then all the technology that has followed, all the meters and, and gadgets, but it's all because of life safety, and not just the life safety of, of individuals, citizens, but the life safety of our workers and the health of our workers, and these tools save lives, and they're very expensive tools, and so I greatly appreciate the donation of that device, and, and I see in the future that we'll probably have more than one at some point, because it is a tool that will save lives. My second thing is, I am wearing an orange tie today, some of my colleagues are wearing orange in, in symbolism of the, the resolution that we passed about gun sense, safe gun laws, you know, I, this is symbolism, right? You know, wearing a red tie or an orange tie or an orange shirt or what have you is nothing more than symbolism, but at least, at a, at a minimum, the symbolism keeps the conversation going, and if anybody watched TV over the weekend, a lot of people went to a grocery store in Buffalo and they didn't come home to their loved ones. And you know what, we did this last year, and we did this resolution two years ago, and I think if you roll the tapes back, you'll find that we made the same comments about, just about a different shooting. We have to keep the conversation going. Nobody here is safe, anybody who's watching this at home, anybody sitting on this dais, anybody sitting in, in, in the audience here, anybody can go to their local grocery store, anybody can go shopping, anybody can go anywhere, and who knows when someone's gonna walk in with a gun and start shooting away. And I don't have the answer to the problem, I don't know if it's a mental health problem, I don't know if it's a social media problem, but I do know it's a problem, and I'm grateful that we as a, as a city council stand up to address it, that citizens out there stand up to address it, and we have to keep the conversation going, and, and I would like to ask the city if it's not already planned to light the halo orange as we have done in the past.
I think it's scheduled for June 3.
June, yeah, June 3rd and 4th, yes, yes, sir. So, let's keep the conversation going with, with the gun safety issue. You know, I, this is a difficult one for me, because the city manager did bring up that we flew the Ukrainian flag, and I think that's, I, I think that was the right thing to do, to show our alliance to the Ukrainian people by flying that flag. But I am not deaf to what Ms. Elias said, and I have to tell you, I, I take that flag very personally, very personally, and there used to be a time when I was a kid, the only time that flag flew at half-staff is when the President of the United States died, or, you know, someone to that level, right? And now I see in Lansing, every time a state representative or state senate, senator dies, you know, someone that hasn't served in the last 20 or 30 years, they lower the flag to half-staff, you know, it, it's a nice symbol to the family. That flag needs to fly high all the time, even, and especially when this country's in distress, especially when this country's in distress. I, to her point, and you know, this is the First Amendment, right? You know, you, you might not like what I say, but I got a right to say it, and so do you, there are some flags that some people just are not comfortable with, and they're citizens and they're taxpayers as well, and I think we really have to have a deep discussion when we decide what flags we're gonna fly around here. Now, you know, I'm, I hate to use the term ally, but that seems to be the vernacular, I'm an ally of the LGBTQ plus community, I've always supported the rights for everybody included that, including that community. Do we fly their flag? I don't know, do we fly a Christian flag on Easter, do we fly a Muslim flag on a Muslim holiday? I, I don't know, but I think that's a discussion we really need to have, I, that American flag means a lot, and we should respect the symbolism of that flag. And I'm just gonna leave it at that, and we can have that conversation, a deeper conversation if anybody else wants to at another time. And then last but not least, I appreciate my colleagues bringing up the Capitol tour, we're going tomorrow, we're taking a number of the Youth Advisory Board to the state capitol, you know, there's a lot of young people that work at the Capitol, there's a few old ones too, but you'd look around here, just walk around this building, go to the state capitol, go to the county building, government doesn't work without people, and students really need to understand that there are careers in government and not just being an elected official. It's, it's the work that's done every single day by, by the staffs that make this, make this place run, and, and kids really need kids, young adults, high schoolers, they really need to think about careers in public service, cuz if we don't have people working in public service, what's gonna happen to our, our governments? I, I used to do, before COVID, I, I would get invited to a local high school, I'm not gonna name it, a local high school, and we did a government day and there was a panel and I was part of the panel, and I would ask every single year, how, how many of you are planning on going into a job in government? And not one hand would go up. There had to be 40, 50 kids in the room, not one hand. There're gonna be doctors, there're gonna be lawyers, there're gonna be data scientists, there're gonna be all kinds of things, nobody wanted to go into government. Nobody stood up and said, yeah, one day I wanna be President of the United States, nobody. Government has to run every single day, this operation here has to run every single day. So, tomorrow, we're gonna take these young people up to Lansing, they're gonna meet not only legislators, and I wanna thank State Representative Nate Shannon, Diana Farrington, and State Senator Michael McDonald for hosting our, their young constituents, but they're gonna see, they're gonna hear from people who actually work in government every single day and learn why they got involved in government, and I think that's very important that young people know that there is an option for them to work in government and actually make our democracy work. So I'm very excited about the trip tomorrow, I hope it's a great experience for everybody. I'm sorry you never got to see the Capitol, Mr. Radke.
Looking forward to it.
A few of them grad and never been to the Capitol, you should've went to MSU.
I've been to the Capitol, I've never been on a tour of the Capitol.
Yes, go green, yes, go green, go white, thank you, guys. But anyways, that's, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, I will get off my soapbox now.
That's all?
That's all, although I should've loaned my soapbox to the city manager when he was getting his picture taken with that tall gentleman. Sorry, sir, sorry.
Whoa.
See, it always goes back to the joke, doesn't it? I can't help myself, but anyways, my apologies. But anyways, my apologies.
Poor guy can't say anything.
Throw the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. Go ahead and take a shot. I deserve it.
We punch upward, you don't punch downward.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for indulging.
Okay, thank you. Council, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Mrs. Kaschewski.
Tonight, we were asked again about answering questions to the audience when they asked them. Throw the chair to Mr. Vanderpoel. I thought we addressed that before. I thought we responded in some fashion. I can't remember now whether it was online or what, but all questions were answered.
Mr. Vanderpoel.
What am I remembering?
That's a good question, Councilwoman Kaschewski. As I said earlier, we try to do the best we can to respond at the meeting, but sometimes we do have to research the issue and get back to the resident. We don't have a forum where we necessarily post back online, but normally what we will do is follow up, and I've shared many of these emails with city council when we follow up with a resident or a letter or, you know, whatever the case may be. We're pretty good about it. Fortunately, in Ms. Elias's case, I'm not sure what happened there, but for those who regularly attend the meeting and ask questions, we normally do get back if we can provide answers, and I do update council with that information as well.
Well, we do have a strategic planning meeting coming up in June, correct?
Yes, and the list.
Is that going to be strictly for the ARPA money or?
No, there's about, well, now that we're up to 17 action items, and the list is growing, so we have about 15 minutes to get through each of the 17 action items. So I caution you to be careful about adding more items, but this is something we can continue to talk about. If there's a better way to do it, we're all ears.
That's all I'm saying is there are a couple of issues that maybe we need to address as a council. Do we want to respond consent agenda when everybody, audience speaks on the consent agenda? Answer the questions at that point? Have a format as to the ones that we have to research, how that response is going to be given? If they want an answer, let them leave their name, address, email, address, whatever with our secretary so that they can get an answer. And we need to maybe take a look at our rules of procedure and see what flags we're going to allow be flown. How do you get a resolution to support any one of your projects? Maybe some of these items are something that we need to discuss as a council, whether it be after a slow meeting or, I'm going to let you come up with the answer to that. I'm not going to add to your 17. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. Council, anyone else? Mrs. Saroski?
Okay, I'm going to try to be brief, but I do want to piggyback on a couple of comments that were made. So, yes, I do appreciate that our resident, or residents, our other council members have worn orange. I own no orange in my life, so it just doesn't look good, so, on me. So I, but I do support the residents that were here about gun violence and not having any more gun violence. Yes, as Councilman, Mr. Yanis has said, we have got every year, it's another gun violence issue, another gun violence issue. And he had mentioned that he doesn't, he doesn't know, is it mental health? Yes, I can tell you, I know it's mental health. I can unequivocally say, yes, those that are committing these violent acts have some mental health issue, and it is not, we have more guns, as they said on the news yesterday, there are more guns in this country than there are residents. And that includes children. That's residents, that's people, not just voters. So we have people, many, 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 many people that can own guns safely and can do it in a nice, wonderful, safe manner. And then there's the ones that cannot, and it's mental health. And we have definitely need to continue to improve our mental health, and I'm out here advocating as a nurse, and advocating as a person, and advocating as a mother and a grandmother, and a scared woman at times. We need to continue to increase whatever we can to prevent those that should not have guns from having them in their hands. So that is my soapbox, Mr. Yanis. We need to get these guns and out of those hands and away from those people that should not have them. This kid that, and I say kid because he's 18, and anybody that's not, any young man who's not 30 is still a kid in my book, because they just, they're still learning and they're still growing, and this poor kid, even though he created a heinous act, is obviously struggling and has never gotten the help that he probably needed in some fashion. And here we are today with that issue. So, mental health, we still need help with that. And I don't have the answer to how we can get it, but I have the answer, the answer that yes, that's definitely an issue. And then flags. Yes, I do agree that we probably need to tighten up how we, what flags we fly and how we fly them, and how we fly them is definitely as important as what we fly, because that flag, and I have a flag, that flag flies at my house every day, and that flag is extremely important to me. I've had, sent my husband to a war, I've sent my son to a war, and I literally, when I walk by that flag, I do kiss that flag because it's something that's very important to me. And had I not married a man in the Air Force, I would have gone myself and taken care of soldiers, and that's very important to me. But when we fly a flag, the United States of America flag, no other flag should be above it, and no other flag should be even next to it, below it. And please remember that, residents, because our flag is the most important flag, and we still need to make sure that that flies all the time. I've seen flags, I've seen Ukrainian flags fly without an American flag on residents' flagpoles, and that should not happen. So please remember, when we fly a flag, our flag should always be the most important flag out there. And on that note, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Did I get you, Ms. Zarco? I can't remember.
You did. I was going to ask for a second time around, but that's okay. I'm fine. Maybe.
I see you're looking over there.
I know you're, you're a bad idea. I feel bad because Mr. Radke didn't have a chance to ever have a tour of the Capitol. However, those of us that went there as a group many years ago as a council, I just want to know that there was a challenge.
How many years ago was that?
Yeah. There was a challenge where Mayor Noddy and actually Councilman Richard Brachi actually climbed the dome to the top. And I don't know if that's still available to you, but it might be an option if you choose to.
Climbing the dome?
The dome.
What do you mean? Like there's stairs?
There's stairs. There was a stairs. It's a ladder. It's a ladder that goes the shape of the dome, and they went to the top just to prove that they could. So it might give you something to think about tomorrow. I'll hold the ladder. I'll just wait for the report, but I look forward to tomorrow.
Nobody's climbing that dome.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So a couple of points that were made today, just I guess I'll weigh in. I'm proud to support the gun violence resolution. It's very timely, given the events of this past weekend, another tragedy, another time for us to look in the mirror and remind ourselves that we are the only civilized nation on the earth that goes through this problem. We are the only nation on the earth that has 300 million guns, and we are not the only nation on earth with mental health issues. We are not the only nation on earth with criminal tendencies. We are not the only nation on earth with madmen. We are not the only nation on earth with people who are inclined to hurt others. We are the only nation on earth where you can go and get your 15-year-old kid a gun at the Walmart or supply store right down the street, and we fetishize, fetishize guns, excuse me. We celebrate guns. Guns are a hobby. Guns are a sport. Guns are our culture, and this is what we are sowing as a result of it. And until we get serious, we're just going to keep repeating it over and over and over again, and I cannot believe that we count ourselves as a serious nation and we just let each other, we just let mass murders like this happen on a regular basis without doing anything about it. And if you bring it up right now, it's like, oh, you're trying to make political points during a tragedy. Well, you're dang right. When else would you do it? When else would you do it? And by the way, there's no time when you can't take advantage of the tragedy because it's always happening. If you wait for a lull in a mass shooting, it'll never come in the United States. It's so infuriating that we have to live in a country where you, the spectacle of being killed by a madman with an AR-15 in body armor at the grocery store is something you have to worry about, or at church, or at school, or at the movies. It's unbelievable. It really is, and I wish we could do something about it. Ms. Elias, you know, I would say that what we do is we endeavor to answer all the questions we can at the meeting. We generally do. If we can't, then we ask the person to write their name down, and the clerk takes it, and then the city manager or somebody else. Now, sometimes you do have things like, like, I'll give you an example. Like, there's been a lot of participation tonight, but sometimes people will come up and say, "Ah, you have an LGBT ordinance? Why don't you have a National Prayer Day ordinance?" Well, sometimes I don't necessarily look at those as action requests. Like, if you said, "I want to know. I want an actual answer. This is my email address. Please tell me." We'll get back to you. But sometimes people just make comments that are phrased in the form of a question. They don't leave any way for us to get hold of them, and they do, they just seem like rhetorical questions. But I think that our, the way we handle it right now is pretty well-covered. We're all up here. All of our cell phones and our email addresses are published on the website. Many of us are active on Facebook, and that's where a lot of the questions get asked and answered, or other social media. We have a See Click Fix. We have a newsletter. We have a whole bunch of ways that you can get ahold of the city administration or city council. And so I think this method is working. Sure, we could probably improve on it here and there, but I don't think we need a wholesale new policy there. And lastly, look, on flags, I would say, I guess it's personal preference, but I think it works pretty well where the city council represents the residents of the city of Sterling Heights, and if we feel strongly enough that a certain flag should fly, like for example, the Ukrainian flag, I think that that's the way that the resident's voice is heard, and I'm not aware of really any other way to do it. And so we have to have our finger on the pulse of what's happening in the city and make those determinations. I think we also, as leaders, have to lead. We have to lead boldly at times. We have to look and say, "Are there ways that we can use our platform, that we can use a position of prominence next to the American flag to tell American residents that you are supported, you're welcome, and we want to be inclusive to you?" And I take a, I believe that there's a difference between supporting certain groups and supporting religions. I'm not aware of any time that we've taken a stance on a religion, but honoring Pride Month and the LGBTQ-plus community is a far cry, in my opinion, from picking a religion to honor. So I'm comfortable with the LGBTQ flag there. I'm comfortable with it right next to the American flag, because what the rainbow flag represents to me is American people, plain and simple. So I'm glad we flew it last year. I hope we'll fly it again this year, and that's all I've got. So our Memorial Day parade is coming up on Memorial Day, obviously. I hope to see you all there. We're back in person for a full-scale event this year, and are we throwing candy? Are we allowed to throw candy?
No, we don't throw it. We hand it. You can't find it. I know, because you're mean.
Can't find.
You can't find it in bulk.
You can't find candy?
I've already been looking for it in bulk and cannot find it. So if anybody's out there and tell me where I can buy it wholesale, let me know.
Wow. Can't buy candy? You can't buy baby formula?
I know. It's sad out there.
Barely buy gas. Okay. Well, listen, we're going to find candy, kids, I promise you. Councilwoman Zarco is going to bring candy.
I'm going to find it somewhere.
And if she doesn't, I'll point her out to you. All right. Thank you, everyone, for attending. Thank you again to the scholarship recipients. Thank you all for being here. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported with no discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.